Call the March twentieth, two thousand and eighteen Finance Committee to order, entertain a motion for consideration of claims.
Motion for consideration of claims, Your Honor. Amount of claims, one hundred and ninety thousand, five hundred and eighty-seven dollars and forty-four cents. And manual checks for the amount of six hundred and sixty-two thousand, two hundred and fifty-eight dollars and twenty-eight cents. Payroll liabilities as of March second in the amount of three hundred and seventy-three thousand, three hundred and sixty-two dollars and six cents for a total of six hundred and twenty-six thousand, two hundred and seven dollars and seventy-eight cents.
Second.
Any discussion? Questions?
No, I've fortunately, I went through it and I, I did not see anything in there that was abnormal. You'd like to see less, but in actuality, it's right in line with what it has been.
Okay. All right. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Any questions from Finance or City Administrator?
I have nothing at this time.
Nothing for me, Your Honor?
Well, we're adjourned at six forty-nine.
Regular meeting of the Riverton City Council, order at seven P. M. Would Councilmember Larson lead us in the pledge of allegiance, and after that, I will offer an invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our dear heavenly Father, we are thankful that we have an opportunity to serve as, as members of the Riverton City Council and to discuss the issues that confront the people who live in Riverton. And pray that the work that we do tonight and every night will be beneficial to them in one way or another, and that we might have their needs at heart as we deliberate on the issues. We're thankful for the opportunity that we have to serve and pray for Thy Spirit to guide and direct us that we might do so in pleasing manner, and we do it in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Would the City Clerk please conduct a roll call?
Yes, Your Honor. Councilman Lance Doughty.
Here.
Councilman Tim Hancock.
Here.
Councilman Mike Bailey.
Here.
Councilman Kyle Larson.
Here.
Councilwoman Holly Gibbon.
Here.
Mayor John Baker.
I am present to declare that we do have a quorum. Chair, would you entertain the motion to approve the agenda for this evening?
Motion to approve the agenda?
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mayor votes aye, and the motion passes. Next item is communications from the floor, citizens' comments. Anyone in the audience wishing to address the council regarding an item that is already on the agenda, be given an opportunity to speak later on. I would ask those individuals who wish to address the council at this time to approach the podium and identify yourselves for the record.
Morning, or I should say afternoon, you gentlemen and ladies. I'm Reverend Lloyd Eckstein. I'm the president of the Riverton Community Food Bank and Riverton Community Church. We were shut down between May and November of last year because of water damage. We spent forty thousand dollars repairing the house at the complete food bank. We're back up. We've had a lot of people in the, not in the community, but outlying communities helping us out. So we are in the process. We had like a thousand, a hundred dollars from a guy in Lander. We've had stuff from Sashawney. We've had stuff from Blue Boys. We've had stuff from, even from Lander. We have not had much from the city of Riverton helping us out. We were going to do emergency only. We have done emergency, but right now, we are open one day a month, which is a third Sunday, one to three. If we get more donations and stuff like that, we're going to go on, open more. Right now, we have a lot of food and a lot of canned goods and stuff that we can give out. We've been helping, a lot of the stuff we've been giving to the senior centers and for meals and wheels. So we're trying to help them out too. We get the women's shelter, so, and we've been helping the school. We've helped the highway patrol and stuff like that. So basically, we've been, I am starting a church. We are licensed as a church. We are licensed as a food bank by the state. We still carry our five oh one C. three for our food bank. My wife lost over a hundred and some pounds having weight reduction surgery in Colorado. So she's down under a hundred and sixty pounds, so, and she's off oxygen. She's off of all kinds of meds. She don't have to have a CPAP machine. And so basically, anybody that's thirty-nine percent of their B. M. I. and is on either good insurance, or if they've got accidentally Social Security, you know, Medicare, they pay for it. They've paid sixty-four thousand dollars worth of surgery, and they're going to do the plastic surgeon sometimes this next month. So she will have a lot less, you know, have plastic surgery done. So, and she is in the process right now, helping people out thing. We have twenty-three people from this area going down that we know of for the surgery. There's the best, you know, they're the best surgeons we've had, and they're one of the top rated in Aurora, Colorado. And I'm starting a church. I've been ordained since ninety-two. I'm, went to theology school. Look at me like, you've got to be kidding me. You went out and did it online? No. Had somebody in the county clerk area say, well, you did it online? No, I went to school for two solid years. And no, I haven't told, like Mike knows, doesn't even know proudly that I was even a minister. Yes, I'm an ordained minister. I'm a rebel. I do weddings in cowboy gear. I've done three weddings. And I hate funerals, but I've done three weddings in a suit. Otherwise, that's it, gentlemen. If there's any questions, I'll gladly try to answer them. I have a list of stuff. We only helped out not as many people. Yes, I, gentlemen there, Mayor. We did, you know, the year before, we did fifty-five thousand pounds of food. This, last year, we only did eleven thousand. But we were shut down between May and November, and we've been asked, why weren't you guys open? Well, when you got it all in storage, and they're tearing the inside of the food bank out. They're tearing the ceilings out. They're tearing the south wall off. They're tearing a west wall out of the food bank. They're destroying your kitchen. They're destroying your bathroom. They're destroying your bedroom, living room, dining room, and you're living in a camper for six months because of mold. So yeah, that's where we've been at. So we're back up. I know it's crazy to be back up, but we, if we can help somebody that in need, we, right now, if you go to some of the grocery stores, you'll, or not grocery stores, but the cafes, you'll see little containers that says Riverton Food Bank on them. And they, I've had people say, well, jeez, you're only getting like, you know, coins. If I get ten dollars every, every week, that's forty dollars I can buy more food. We buy everything locally. We don't go out of the area. If I get twenty dollars a week, I got eighty dollars to buy groceries, to help out. So that's where those little things are. We'd like to have some more areas that we could put them in, like gas stations or something, these little containers that says Riverton Community Food Bank. And I, basically, gentlemen, if you've got any questions, ask them, or anybody from the public. I don't care. If I can't answer them, I'll get you the answer somehow. I did that when I worked for the Wyoming State Penitentiary as a maximum security officer. If some inmate asked me a question and wanted some answers, and I didn't know the answer, I tell them, I'll get you the answers. And I usually got them. So anyway, so if you have a question, ask.
Any questions, counsel? Thanks, Lloyd, for all you do. Okay?
If you need more of these, I have a whole bunch more.
Good. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Consent agenda, would the clerk? Oh, we've got one more. I'm sorry, Matt.
And one more after him.
And one more after him.
Too slow.
All right.
Mayor and members of the City Council, Riverton City Staff, police, thank you. I'll try to be brief. My name's Matt Wright. I'm the, under, tonight, I'm under the Central Wyoming Skateboarding Association. And we want to propose an idea that we think will be a big step forward in the, a positive progression in City Park that's been taking place. And what we'd like to do, well, first of all, we have some lighting that we've, we've put up, and we've had a year of success with that. This has all been paid for by private funds and donations, the light bill and the lights themselves, thanks to Apodaca Construction Crew and the electrical dynamics here in Riverton. But we've had our Friday Night Lights Club events in the spring and summer and fall, and no, no issues. It's been really fun. We've had some nights up to thirty to forty kids. It's been, you know, given something for teenagers to do, and it's, it's a big hit, but they want more, we want more. And so we'd like to propose that we keep paying the electrical bill, but have them on, we want to install a timer and have them come on at dusk with a sensor and then turn off automatically at a agreed-upon time. And that would be a nightly thing, hopefully. So that's what I'm asking. I've been in contact with, with Tony and the staff about this, and also Eric Murphy, the Chief of Police, and I'll let them speak for themselves if they care to, or we can have a discussion. That's my, that's my question. Can we do that?
So you want to do a seven nights a week?
Yeah.
Tony?
Mayor and counsel, we have had some brief discussions. I've been able to talk with Chief Murphy, as well as Public Works Director Butterfield, about the matter. There were a number of questions that came up with regard to use. In the past, the conversation was some concern about the park being open up at night without lights, and then now the lights are here, and they've also, you have also had staff or parental guidance, or I don't know how you would say that, at the events now, and that is going to change. However, as we look at our council goals, the use of the parks, the continued use of the parks, this is one of the things that could actually drive some usage a little bit. There are some concerns, you know, is that going to, is it going to cause any, you know, trash to be left out or, or things like that? But at some point, I think we need to try these things. I think it's a good idea to give it a try. The reason I mention this is because one of the code items that you're going to have coming to you at the April third meeting is actually a cleanup of the code that deals with when parks are closed. There's a conflict in our code that where one section says one time and another one says another, so that's something we need to talk about anyway. So if, the idea of using the park a little bit more, or at least trying it, has some merit for us at this point. I've spoken with Chief Murphy. I won't speak for him, but it seems, generally speaking, it seems to be a positive move forward if we're going to use our parks. The only caveat I would say is that we make sure that if it's not going well, that we have the ability to manage that in some way. And I think we have some verbiage that we can put as part of our ordinances that allows us to do that on the fly without having to come back and redo ordinances over and over again. I would stand for any questions you have.
My, my recollection and thought was that because our ordinance says that the park is closed at dark, unless there's some organized event, then we figured the Friday Night Skate was an organized event and, you know, designated that way for a time period, and, and so that's kind of how we dealt with that. So let's, let's work on this ordinance and see what we can do to clean it up, change it.
Sounds good.
Okay.
Okay.
Thanks, Matt.
Yep. Thank you. Appreciate your time.
Okay.
Hi, I'm Cole, the CEO with Community Health Centers of Central Wyoming. Mayor Baker, it's good to see you again. Appreciate you coming out to our open house last year, two thousand and sixteen. I, I've actually come here a little bit just to kind of touch base a little bit about what some of the things that we're doing. Right, right now, we are in the process of securing financing for about two million dollars towards a new facility for our clinic, the, the location of which hasn't been finalized yet, but what we're looking at is somewhere between ten and twelve thousand square feet on a new clinic for community health centers. Right now, we're in the Fremont Therapy Building across the street from the, the hospital, and we're quickly outgrowing that space. So we've, we've been seeing our, our numbers going up. And one might ask, well, you know, why are your numbers going up? And there, there are a couple reasons. One, we've got some really great providers there, but the other reason being, of course, is for, for those that don't have newspapers or the internet, healthcare is kind of in a shambles right now throughout the country, and it's, and it's only going to get worse. And I think some of that fallout that we're going to see, both on a state level and on a national level, is, is going to have profound impact here in Fremont County. And particularly right now, one of the things that I'm concerned with is the state of healthcare in Riverton. As a, as a primary care provider, we provide both women's health and family medicine. One of my big concerns is that we're slowly starting to see the erosion of our hospital-based services here in Riverton. And I, and I know I've communicated a little bit up, up through the City Council in, in some of the, the prior months, but, but right now, we're, we're going to be knocking on two years that we haven't had labor and delivery at our hospital. Our surgical services are slowly slipping away. There, there are going to be other services that as we see more and more of the staff from the Riverton Hospital getting pulled to the Lander Hospital, my fear is that it's only a matter of time. And I, I understand that the powers that be are assuring our Riverton constituents that, oh no, the hospital's just fine and all these services are returning. But, but I've been in healthcare a long time, and services seldom ever return when they start taking them away. I've been in a number of communities as both a, the CEO of rural hospitals, but also as an auditor of multiple rural hospitals. And one of the trends is when services leave, they seldom come back. I approached the, the Fremont County Commissioners today and, and asked that a, a task force, if you will, a, a committee be put together of a, kind of a multidisciplinary group of City Council member from Lander, Riverton, County Commissioners, maybe other stakeholders within the healthcare community, to begin looking at the state of healthcare within Fremont County. One of the interesting things that I saw today at the County Commissioners meeting were, were some of these economic development groups really, really excited about something like broadband and, and, and what kind of impact that could have. And it's, and I found it kind of interesting in that those are one of those services that everybody's just expecting high-speed internet these days. It's, it's nothing that really sets you apart from anybody else. What is concerning to me is that while we're looking at all these other areas of economic development, the single biggest cornerstone that could really drive economic growth within our county is healthcare. If you look around all of Wyoming, you will probably see that Fremont County is one of the few areas that doesn't have a new hospital, nor has had any decent capital investment in their facilities in, in a number of years. Even if you go up to something as little as Thermopolis, they are getting ready to invest tens of millions of dollars into their new facility. And granted, a part of it is coming through a mill levy and things like that, but they've got a lot of community support. And in a town the size of Riverton, in a market as, as big as the eastern side of Fremont County is, we're, we're continuing to lose services that basic hospitals throughout the state are providing in communities much, much smaller. My, my fear is that as a, as a for-profit entity, and I don't want to take away anything from what is currently going on with our hospitals, because I, I understand the, the tasks that they have. They've got shareholders throughout this country that are demanding profits, and, and they've got to do what they need to do to make sure that those profit margins stay where they're at. But as they, they look to maintain those profit margins, there's only three ways you can do it. One is increasing volumes, and we, we have about eighty, eighty-five percent net outmigration in Fremont County. I don't know that I've ever seen a county that has more patients go out of the county to receive care that they could receive in the county than in Fremont County. They, they leave for very specific reasons. So, so increasing volume can be one of those, but the only other way is reducing costs, and they're attempting to do that, I believe, by reducing services that are redundant, those that are offered in both Lander and Riverton. But as you reduce costs, you have to ask yourself, at what cost? Right now, you do it by reducing the number of employees, which adds to your job base. You do it by cutting services. You do it by, by cutting back where the people that have to bear most of that cost is the consumer. They do it by fewer services. They do it by longer drive times to get to the services that they need, all, all for the sake of chasing a, a margin. The other piece is, of course, raising prices. I, I was interested to find out a couple months ago that even your own county does not contract with the hospital in the county for services. The majority of the patients leave the county for basic surgeries that could be provided because the costs, whether they're an MRI, whether they're a CT or a knee replacement. All those things can be done here, but the price is so astronomically large that people like the county choose not to contract with the hospital because it just doesn't make sense. And so I'm concerned with the direction of healthcare in Fremont County, especially as a provider that's looking to grow, and a provider that comes from a rural background that wants to try to keep as many of those services local that we can keep. I, I foresee a time in the not-too-distant future that as healthcare becomes more unstable, the current structure of our healthcare system in Fremont County will necessitate the closing of the Riverton Hospital. And I, I know you have people that are saying, oh, that'll never happen, but when the profits dry up, what are their other alternatives? But there are options that exist out there that can shore up healthcare. Why, why does a hospital exist in Thermopolis when they only have thirty-five hundred people in the whole county? Set aside their recent mill levels, they've been doing just fine for years. How does healthcare, how does a hospital sustain themselves in that environment when we've got four, five, six times as many patients seeking those services just here in Riverton? And so my, my, my request to the County Commissioners is going to be the same one that I'm requesting of the Riverton City Council. It's going to be the same one that I'm going to be pitching to Lander next week, and that is to get interested people involved, because right now, it seems like healthcare is, is on an autopilot. Everybody is content on letting an entity from Tennessee handle all of our healthcare. And, and I, I fear that eventually, there'll be no hospital here in Riverton. Now, what does that mean? Well, try to attract businesses when you don't have a hospital that can serve their needs. They're not going to relocate here. Try to attract professionals and retirees when they don't have the basic core services that they're not only demanding, but they're expecting to be there. When you have to drive thirty-five or forty miles, it doesn't seem like that much until it's a winter day. You know, I, I'm, I'm a father of five. My, my son was at a football game a year ago, and one of the kids from the, the Riverton High School football team dislocated a hip and, and sat there on the football field for forty-five minutes, three hundred yards away from the E. R., waiting for services to be rendered. Is that a rare occurrence? Maybe so, but I think it's going to become a little more commonplace. And so I'll be sending out a letter to each of the City Councils, each of people that are stakeholders, asking that we put some level of importance on what we're seeing right now taking place within the county with regard to healthcare, because it's going to get worse. As, as the Affordable Care Act starts to unravel a little bit more, as budgets get tighter, it's going to get harder and harder to maintain those profits that Sage West has traditionally seen. And when the profits go away, your for-profit entity will eventually go away. They will only subsidize healthcare in Fremont County for so long.
Oh, okay. So we had you on the agenda last week?
Oh, I, I was told I was got moved to this week.
No. No. You were on the agenda last week.
Yeah.
Okay, you would've had a half an hour to talk. Okay? But we have other business to-
Yep, and I'm, I'm all done now. That's all I was going to say.
Okay. So I just have a couple of questions to ask.
Yes, sir.
Okay, so does your organization pay any property taxes in Fremont County?
We don't.
You don't?
No.
Okay. Sage West does.
Oh, I know they do.
Okay. See, so here's a question, okay, is that, is it, what's the difference? You know, it seems to me that we could spend a lot of time talking about Sage West and running them into the ground every day, and eventually, we can run them out of business. Can't we?
Well, I think they're going to eventually close Riverton anyway, so-
See, that's, that's a foregone- See, that's, that's a foregone conclusion on your part.
Yeah.
Okay?
Well, it, it is, it is. It's just when I, when I see trends-
But you're competing with them.
No, we want to collaborate.
No, you're competing with them.
Yeah.
I don't see that it's any different, except that you don't have the overhead that they have. Okay?
Well, yeah.
You're not trying to pay taxes. You don't pay any taxes.
Very familiar.
You live in Casper, right?
Correct, yeah.
You see?
And, and we've, we've approached Sage West about doing more collaboration, because we want to keep more services here in Riverton. But the, the outmigration is just-
Well, send your letter. I'm sure that somebody from the city council will be glad to participate in that.
Perfect.
Because we recognize the importance of good healthcare in Fremont County and in Riverton. Okay? And we're concerned about that. Okay?
And, and that's, and that's where I, I want to hopefully direct people to work.
So, if there's some positive way that we can work to improve, maintain and improve healthcare in Fremont County, then certainly, the city council will be involved in that process.
That is great. I appreciate that, Mayor.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. All right.
So, I guess I'll return the page. Now, I guess we're ready for the consent agenda.
Yes, Your Honor. Approval of the minutes, March 6, 2018, regular council meeting. Approval of the minutes, March 13, 2018, council work session. Approval of the minutes, March 13, 2018, executive session. Approval of the minutes, March 20, 2018, finance committee meeting. Approval of the finance committee recommendations for March 20, 2018.
Are there any other items that require discussion?
Your Honor.
Go ahead, Lawrence.
The Finance Committee recommends payment of claims in the amount of $190,587.44. Manual checks in the amount of $62,258.28. Payroll on liabilities for March 2 in the amount of $373,362.06, for a total of $626,207.78.
Thank you. The Chair would entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion on consent?
Your Honor, I would abstain from the Bailey Enterprises and Lex Line items on the Finance Committee recommendations.
Thank you. Anything else? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Public hearing in consideration transfer of ownership of restaurant liquor license from Inga and Jacob Tyree, doing business as Roasted Bean and Cuisine to Tyra Enterprises, doing business as Roasted Bean and Cuisine. City Clerk's report, please.
Yes, Your Honor. The City Clerk's office received a transfer of ownership application for a restaurant liquor license for Tyra Enterprises, doing business as Roasted Bean and Cuisine. The application is going from individuals to a business, so it's going from Inga and Jacob J. Tyra, doing business as Roasted Bean and Cuisine, to Tyra Enterprises, doing roasted bean as, um, doing, roasted bean as cuisine. The liquor license will stay in the same location at 514 West Main. The Liquor Commission has certified the application as complete. The proper fees have been paid and proper notice to the public has been advertised. Therefore, staff is recommending approval of the, the transfer.
Thank you. The Chair would entertain a motion to open the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, we open the public hearing. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I now declare the public hearing to be open. The hearing will be conducted in accordance with state statutes or other applicable laws, and I would ask those individuals wishing to address the council to approach the podium and identify yourselves for the record. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak?
Your Honor, seeing there's nobody to come forward, I recommend we close the public hearing.
Second.
Moved and seconded, close the public hearing. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. I think. Are there opposed? Sorry, I didn't, I jumped over that. Opposed? Okay?
Your Honor, I would move that we approve the transfer of ownership of the restaurant liquor license to Tyra Enterprises, doing, doing business as Roasted Bean and Cuisine.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Discussion on that. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mayor votes aye, and the motion passes. Thank you. Okay, bid award, Big Wyoming Resurfacing Project. Public Works Directors, report, please.
Yes, Your Honor. Coming before you is the second 1% project for the upcoming construction season. This is the Big Wyoming Resurfacing Project. This project entails asphalt work, concrete work, and will be in the areas of Prairie, West Bend, and Big Bend. In coordination with the Fix Our Road Citizens Committee, plans and specifications were developed, and the project was advertised on February 14th and 21st, 2018. Six contractors attended the pre-bid meeting, and bids were received and opened on March 1st, 2018 with the following results. 71 Construction with a total bid of $853,246. JTL Group, doing business as Knife River, at $1,009,356.45. And finally, Dave's Asphalt Company with a total bid of $891,225. Staff has reviewed the bids to ensure that they are responsive to our specifications, and from that review, we recommend that the apparent low bidder, 71 Construction, be awarded the bid in the amount of $853,246. There are sufficient funds in the 1% fund to take care of this project, and it did come under our staff estimate of $930,000. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. The Chair would entertain a motion.
Your Honor, I make a motion that we award the Big Wyoming Resurfacing Project, 71 Construction, for $856,246.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mayor votes aye, and the motion passes. Next item is a bid award on the East Logan Park Concrete Project. Public Works Director?
I was a little quick on that.
Yes.
I'm sorry. Thank you, Your Honor. This is our third 1% project coming before you for consideration. Very similar. Staff worked with the 1% committee to develop this project. It originally started from feedback from citizens about the concrete condition on Eastview and Westview. We considered the concrete condition, developed plans, and then realized, why are we doing concrete and not asphalt? So, we included asphalt work in this project as well. The project was prepared and advertised on the 28th and the 7th, February 28th, March 7th, and bids were opened on March 15th with the following results. EHC with a total bid of $599,145. AAA Building Services at $715,925. 71 Construction at $561,400. Dave's Asphalt Company at $522,700. Staff again reviewed each of these bid results to ensure they were responsive, and we recommend to the council that the East Logan Park Concrete Project be awarded to Dave's Asphalt in the amount of $522,700. Again, there are funds sufficient in the 1% fund to take care of this project. This came under our staff estimate, which was at $584,000. And I do want to make a note that all three of our 1% projects this year were designed and managed in-house. And I feel that Don, Bob, and Monty deserve a lot of credit for saving money in the 1% fund and taking care of this stuff in-house, so we can put more dollars on the street. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. Thank you. Chair would entertain a motion.
Your Honor, I would move that we approve the East Logan Park Concrete Project to Dave's Asphalt for $522,700.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any discussion on this one? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mayor votes aye, and the motion passes. Approval of Child Development Services Bill of Sale. City Administrator's report.
Thank you, Your Honor. In June of 2010, the city applied for and received a community development block grant for the purposes of working with Child Development Services in construction of a new facility. Upon review of the permit, a certificate of occupancy was issued for that in 2012. Shortly thereafter, there was mediation involving cost, cost discrepancies in discussion or, or mediation surrounding that, and as such, an agreement was met, and that agreement is provided for you in your packet. Part of that agreement has the city transferring the ownership of that facility to Community, uh, Child Development Services upon payment, as noted in the contract. At this time, via the Bill of Sale, we are recommend, we are recommending council approve the, the Bill of Sale for transfer of that facility according to the agreement provided. I would point out that Child Development Services does have a representative here, Lori Morrow. She, she's worked with me on this project, and we've had a number of conversations about it, so I'm sure she can provide more history than me. I wasn't here at the time. But that is all we have for this report, and we recommend approval.
Thank you. The Chair would entertain a motion.
Your Honor, I would move that we approve the property transfer to Child Development Services.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mayor votes aye, and the motion passes. Thank you, coming, for coming, Lori. Public hearing in consideration ordinance 18-003, first reading. Riverton Municipal Code Title II revisions. City Administrator's report, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. Public, um, oh, sorry. The proposed ordinance modification is part of the ongoing cleanup of the Riverton Municipal Code that we have discussed as part of our goal setting. It is reviewed, it is part of Goal Number 7, Development of Long-Term Planning Mechanisms, specifically the sub-goal of developing the Riverton Municipal Code. One of the items that we found immediately was that we denote a city engineer. While we have engineers, the appointment of a city engineer as a member of the management team is not necessarily, is not something that we actually do. We have a community development director. As with many codes, we take a boilerplate code and sometimes use that, and then we try to work our best with it or along with it. In this case, we're trying to fine-tune the code to the management structure that we have. As such, we're proposing this as a change, as the change that you see before you. I would denote that as we move forward, there are a number of places within the existing code that denote the city engineer where those duties would sometimes go to the Public Works Director, or the Administrator, or the Community Development Director. That's going to take us a little bit more time. Having this overarching, higher-level ordinance change on the onset does help us move forward as we, as we start cleaning it up. So, it's just one of many things you're going to see in the, in the coming months, but we look forward to doing that with you, and we would stand for any questions that you might have.
Okay. Would the city clerk please read ordinance number 18-003 by title only?
Yes, Your Honor. Proposed ordinance number 18-003 on first reading, and ordinance amending Title II, Administration and Personnel, to revise Chapter 2.20, City Engineer, of the Riverton Municipal Code, and repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith and providing for an effective date.
Thank you. The Chair would entertain a motion to open the public hearing.
Motion to open public hearing?
Second.
Moved that we open a public hearing, discuss ordinance 18-003. Any discussions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mayor votes aye, and the motion passes. I now declare the public hearing open. The hearing will be conducted in accordance with state statutes and other applicable laws. I'd ask those individuals wishing to address the council to approach the podium, identify yourselves for the record. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this issue?
Your Honor, seeing none, I move that we close public hearing.
Second.
Moved and seconded, that we close the public hearing. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mayor votes aye, and I now declare the public hearing to be closed. The Chair would entertain a motion to adopt ordinance 18-003 on first reading.
So moved. Second.
Moved and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Your Honor.
Go ahead.
I think it's a pretty... There's a lot of references to city engineer in the code. I'm looking at this, and I'd say at least 30?
56.
Okay. So, I guess, I, I agree with the idea of this, you know, because if, if we're going to have a community development director, which we do, as it stands right now, if I'm correct, there's no reference in our code to a community development director.
There is.
Is there?
Your Honor, yes, Councilman, there is, at different points, and that's truthfully part of the cleanup. We, we do have to divvy those duties up appropriately.
But I guess in the personnel section, I mean, I looked at that tonight. I, do we have it there, where we specifically list it, like we've got the finance director, we've got the city clerk?
It, it is located under Community Development Department.
Okay.
But, no.
So, I guess my concern is, is if we make this change, we're opening a 56-reference can of worms. We're going to have to go through and clean that up. That's going to take a significant amount of time. Or, we could indicate that the community development director is the city engineer. What, I guess, how much do we want to be getting into this? It, it's going to be a lot of work to change that. I mean, and not just going through and finding all the references and kind of deciding and parsing out, is this city engineer, community development director, like you said, city administrator, who does this fall on? But is there an alternative that would be simpler, is my point?
I, on, on the one hand, you would want to say yes. That there are, that there are, there is the possibility of having, you know, okay, this is, this person is appointed as the city engineer, but on other, on other parts of your code, of those 56, some of those things don't actually, shouldn't fall within the city engineer as, as a community development director. The, the, so, yes and no. It, it can work. It would still take a number of, a number of changes to this code to even function that. So, the approach, and the approach may, maybe is simplistic, but the fact is, we have a community development director, we have a community development department, and therefore, the way we approached it was simply to say, okay, this is how our organization functions, and now we're going to make this code work in line with what we do. I, I will tell you, and I've done this, this type of work a little bit before, and you're absolutely correct. It takes a great amount of time. We are opening the proverbial can of worms, but once it's done, it's a highly functioning code that takes very little maintenance comparatively, and that the additions to those codes become much easier, and the modifications are also a lot easier. So, long-term, I, I would suggest it would be better to make the change and then do the long-term changes. But we can take any direction that council chooses.
Then I guess, what is, what are you thinking would be the future of that reference, then, to the Community Development Department and being directed by the Community Development Director? Are we just going to have that repeated, then, or?
Your Honor, if I understand your question, Councilman, if the Community Development Department then just consistently reports to the Community Development Director, that's how that would, yes, we would make sure, if I understand your question correctly, we would make sure that that department reports to, to the Community Development Director. Some of the more challenging ones are going to be things like road, uh, road reg, uh, help me out here.
References to sidewalks, roads, there.
Sidewalks, roads, sizing, and the like, and who actually does the approval on that. That's going to be a slightly larger part of the discussion, only because, of course, we need to make sure, we just need to figure out who's really in charge of it. The idea that we're talking about is, in terms of management teams, when you get down to functionality, has more to do with everybody working together. I'm not concerned about the people working together. I'm just trying to make sure that we're clear on who is responsible and who people talk to. So, if 71 Construction wants to know how they need to do something, and to what width they need to do something, do they go to planning, or do they go to public works? That- That part's going to be important. In the past, you have gone to city engineer. You could say city engineer, but those aren't, there are other options that it's not appropriate. I don't mean to talk in circles about it, it's just a little more complex than, well, it's a can of worms.
I thought I did a pretty, I thought I nailed that pretty well. I mean, there's going to be a lot.
You did.
It just seems that for a little bit of pain at the front end, we avoid a lot of pain down the road and that really the, this is the better choice. It's a little painful at the beginning, but it's a better choice. To call, to have what we have and to get rid of what we don't have, as far as titles go, that we don't have a city engineer. We have a community development director, so that's what we should call it.
And Your Honor, one small item to point out is that we do have engineers within, obviously with, within the city, we've already talked about that this evening, and they're both, they're very appreciated, but those individuals that we appoint doesn't mean we won't have engineers. It doesn't mean we can't use engineers. It means that it is not a pointed member of the management team.
Correct.
So.
Right.
Call for the question.
So, well, I have a question.
The can of worms has been mentioned several times.
And, and so my question is, is that it wasn't very long ago that we were redefining who our finance director was and, and so about every year or two, we wind up reorganizing the senior staff and saying who's who and where all this goes. And I'm wondering if maybe it's not appropriate for us to maybe look at the entire structure and, and so come up with something that, what, is comprehensive instead of piecemeal.
Your Honor, I believe, I believe that is truthfully what we're attempting to do right now. There are a couple ways that we can go about this type of, this type of work. One is to, there are companies out there, and I've worked with them, that will come in and they'll ask, okay, how do you want this to work? And they'll go through the highlights and then they'll go back and they'll get their different boilerplate codes that actually line up, do a little work and they'll send you a whole package. And they can do exactly what we're talking about, where we take just an all-at-once comprehensive look at it. I will tell you that the adoption of that, the publishing cost to that is amazing, but it does work. What we're trying to do is, what we're trying to do in-house without taking on that large cost and, is to do that comprehensive approach now, piece by piece by piece by piece. And I understand that is semi-piecemeal, but we do have an intent on how we would do it. The other great part about doing it internally is it provides senior staff and the rest of staff the ability to understand the development and the implementation of those different codes. That way, it becomes almost, when you were there in the development, it's second nature to understand how it works, as opposed to going back and referencing it over and over again. So we do use that as a training mechanism. It's a positive aspect, it's a byproduct of that maybe, but we do like it.
Okay, I guess my concern is, are we going to see 52?
Six.
Different code changes to deal with each of these references to the city engineer in code, in our city code, one at a time?
No, Your Honor. We would find, you would, ideally, we would like to, and this is ideally, so please don't hold me to it, insistently. Ideally, what we would like to do is say, okay, these duties belong in the public works director and these in the administrator and these in the different areas and say, okay, these are, all of these sections are now modified per this ordinance to read thus. And all of these ones are, so ideally, you could do three or four.
At one time.
At one time. Now, those are going to be long, but we, that's what we would look to do. So those, let's take just this one, those 56 could be divided up however many ways and then you would have that many ordinances. That's the goal. Not one after the other, after the other, after the other. That actually gets even more expensive.
Maybe the, maybe do it by the duties. So, if it's going to be the community development director's duties, then those ordinances get changed and then the ones that go to public works would get changed. And I don't know who else is in there for the city engineer, but.
That, yes, Your Honor.
You could split them up that way and sort that out.
Okay, yes, sir. And the other item is, we may just, as we're looking at it, say, okay, we're going to do Chapter Two and then just do all of Chapter Two. And here's Chapter Three and just do all of Chapter Three, as much as we can. And then that compartmentalizes it a little bit for us.
Thank you. Any other questions? All those in favor of ordinance number 18-003, first reading? Say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Mayor votes aye and the motion passes. Resolution 1369, establishing a Solutions Committee. City administrators report, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. Resolution number 1369 establishes, establishes the Solutions Committee and this is noted as one of the council goals that was recently adopted. The resolution 1366 was the council goals. Goal Number Three directs to reinstatement. This is developed and proposed to you with one council liaison appointed by the mayor, between seven and 11 members appointed by the chief of police, with the chief and administrator possibly serving as, able to serve as ex officio members, keeping in mind that we could also add additional specialty staff if that was necessary. And the chief has currently been working on identifying some of the potential members to that now. What we wanted to do in moving this forward sooner rather than later is get a jumpstart on the next year. We understand that it's not the goals for right now, but we also understand that getting this committee together is going to take a little bit of time, getting it functioning, getting it moving. So we want to be moving come July 1. A lot of the other items that we've put in front of you at different times have been, okay, let's get it moving for July 1. This would help us a great deal. That is all, that is the only report I have for now. I stand for questions and Chief Murphy can also speak to his efforts.
Have you got anything for us, Chief?
Your Honor, just that I have contacted several Sage West, public health, things of that nature. I spoke in front of leadership Fremont County and do have a lot of interest in the committee and so I'm very excited and very positive that this is going to work.
Thank you.
Good.
Okay, the Chair would entertain a motion to approve Resolution 1370?
So moved. It's 1369.
I'm sorry, oh.
I would move.
Oh, I'm sorry, I jumped down a line. 1369.
I'd move that we approve Resolution 1369.
Second.
Been moved in second, discussion?
Your Honor?
Go ahead, Lance.
I'm curious if, at what point you will entertain appointments for this committee? Is that something you want to do this evening or is that going to be over a period of time or?
Well, do we, we haven't advertised it yet, is that correct? And we haven't, so we don't really have a big pile of people who have said they wanted to be on the committee at the present time, right?
Your Honor, at this point, we haven't advertised it. The chief has been working to find possible, possible members to staff it. However, the resolution as proposed does have a council liaison attached to it, which would be at the mayor's appointment. I could, there are a number of ways that the city has done that in the past. You can do that now or just solicit amongst the council letters of interest that we provide to you at the next meeting.
Could we have more than one city council person on the committee?
Yes, Your Honor. We, you, a number of ways. You could just amend this to have, amend this resolution to have two council members appointed. You could have it one and an alternate, whatever you want to do with it is fine. We would like any help, anybody who wants to be involved, we're looking.
Is there anybody on the council that wants to be on that committee right now? So Lance and Tim both have raised their hands. The other three are silent. Holly, are you there?
Yep.
Are you interested in the Solutions Committee?
Not if those two want to do it.
Okay. I would like to, it, I think it would be good if we changed this resolution to allow for two members of the city council to be on the committee. It's an important thing for us and I think we need, we need to support it pretty aggressively, so.
I'd move we amend resolution, well, we'd approve Resolution 1369 with the amendment that the membership would consist of two members of the city council nominated by the mayor, but the rest of the members be as it's already written.
Second.
Been moved in seconded. Discussion on that amendment? All in favor of the amendment?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Any opposed? Mayor votes aye, the amendment passes, so it's been amended to allow for two members of the city council to be on the committee. Now we're back on the motion to pass Resolution 1369 to create the Solutions Committee. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mayor votes aye. And, so then I would appoint Lance Godey and Tim Hancock as members of the Solutions And, doesn't say that I need to get approval of the council to do that, does it? Okay.
But we can vote for it right now and get those guys on there.
You want to do it?
No, I'd vote for it.
All right.
If you need a motion, we'll do it. If not.
Yeah, so I'd entertain a motion to appoint those two guys.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, moved in seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mayor votes aye. Thanks for your interest in the Solutions Committee, Tim and Lance. Okay, the next item is Resolution 1370, Resolution of the Governing Body of the City of Riverton, Establishing a Parks Committee to Advise City Officials on Improvements to Be Made to City Parks and to Develop a Parks Master Plan. So the Chair would entertain a motion to approve, all of us see, would the city clerk please read Resolution 1370 by title only?
Yes, Your Honor. A Resolution of the Governing Body of the City of Riverton Establishing a Parks Committee to Advise City Officials on Improvements to Be Made to City Parks and to Develop a Parks Master Plan.
Okay, so, the Chair would entertain a motion to approve Resolution 1370.
Motion to approve Resolution 1370 Establishing a Parks Committee.
Second.
Been moved in seconded. City council involvement adequate, one member, looks like it. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mayor votes aye. The Parks Committee has now been, has now been approved and, so Sean, you want to be on that?
Yes, sir.
Anybody else?
Either way, if Sean wants to do it, I'm good.
Good. Okay, Sean, I'll appoint you to be on the Parks Committee as the city council representative. So I'd entertain a motion for that.
Motion to approve Councilman Peterson for the Parks Committee as the representative of City of Riverton.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. So then on these from the general citizenry, what we'll do is accept a email or a letter of interest or something like that and at the next meeting or two, we'll fill out the committees, right? Is that the goal?
Your Honor, yes, we'll be announcing to council the different appointees that are selected by the public works director and the chief for the respective committees.
Okay, all right. Thank you. The next thing is Resolution 1371, Emergency Management Operations Plan. Police chiefs, report, please.
Your Honor, on February 6, 2018, city council adopted the Multi-Hazard Mitigation Plan, which you might remember. That plan is the overarching document meant to address multi-hazard emergency planning. This is the Unified Emergency Operations Plan and it pertains to how the City of Riverton and the Riverton Police Department specifically would respond to the emergency. And so, the difference in this plan versus the one that we've already adopted is this is exactly how we would go about responding to the emergency. And basically, all it says, Your Honor, is that we would follow FEMA and NIMS, which is the National Incident Management System, which is what we all use. So we're just adopting that we promise to abide by that resolution.
The Chair would entertain a motion to approve Resolution 1371.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion on emergency management? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. The next item is council committee reports and council members' roundtable. No, are we? Are we going to introduce Eric? When we get to your point? Okay, yeah, we're going to do it in a minute. Okay, so, Mr. Godey, have you got anything for us tonight?
The only thing I have, Your Honor, just to remind council, I and I think a couple others are attending the community summit tomorrow regarding some of the CWC projects that are moving forward and will be attending as a city council member, not as a college employee, in that attendance, so.
Won't that be strange?
It'll be strange, but, yeah, I'll put on my city council badge instead of.
Is that going to be hazardous to your health?
I don't think so. I'll be all right. That's all I have, Your Honor.
Okay. Mr. Hancock?
Nothing.
Nothing. Mr. Bailey?
I did attend the Riverton Airport Board Meeting this last Friday and we met up at the airport and, you know, again, the numbers are looking real good. Denver Air Connection's doing a really good job for us. And we got to go out and look at the new snowplow that we got and some of the equipment, so it's nice to see that equipment getting put to good use and those guys do a great job of taking care of the airport up there and making it all passable and stuff. Thank God we didn't have the kind of snow we had last year, so.
Boy, I guess. Thanks, Mike?
Yes.
For your involvement.
Next.
Next.
I attended the Waste Management and there's nothing going, I mean, that was wrong. I attended the Waste Management and they're looking to purchase several pieces of equipment, but the question I had most of all that interests me is directed towards Kyle Butterfield on the employment that we're seeing. How is that doing at the airport?
Your Honor, Councilman, I might have to check our records. This last month, we had around 500. So through the first three months, we're sitting a little over 1,500 employments at this time. I can give you an exact number.
No, I just, it's favorable then.
Yeah, things are favorable and the positive thing is, we look at our employments as our actual performance, but we also work with our consultants to see how our booking trends are moving forward as well. So we can even project how we look over the next few months and the nice thing is, every single month, we're gaining more positive momentum for people booking tickets, which will then translate into actual bookings over the next few months. So, we're enthusiastic, we're really happy with how things are going.
Are we taking? Are we taking seats away from the originating airport yet?
Truth is, some days, yes. Some days, they take them from us. It's kind of a mix and match. On average, Sheridan still has a higher load factor than we do, which we're grateful for, because it's filling the plane, and we both share the cost equally on that plane. So, it's a good thing for both communities succeed, to succeed, but we are increasing our load factor to compete with theirs.
Thank you.
Yes, Your Honor. Mike?
Yes, I forgot a couple of things, too, is that the contract did get approved for next year, of course, as we approved it, and Denver Air Connections is adding some flights, so the schedule's going to change a little bit, but basically, Riverton will get a dedicated middle-of-the-day flight, and Sheridan will get a dedicated middle-of-the-day flight. And it's going to rotate Monday, Wednesday, Friday, Tuesday, Thursday, Saturday. Every other one will be early than late in the, you know, before noon and afternoon kind of a thing. So, to help us with the increased demand, and so, we have an opportunity to increase our, you know, ridership, because we're going to have more seats available every day.
And all of that, at about half the amount of money for the MRG next year, right?
That's right.
Isn't that terrific?
It's really exciting.
Okay, thank you, Kyle and FAST, for the effort that they put forth on this. This is, you know, one of the most effective committees that I think I've ever seen, where they really are, I mean, meet every week, dedicated, hard-working, thoughtful people, committed to building air service in Riverton and its work. Been great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sean?
Yes, Your Honor. Just want to, the Splash Pad is in talks with, well, the city's in talks with Slatton Construction, and I know Kyle Butterfield has reached out to Job Corps to discuss with them about trying to get them involved with the demolition area. So, definitely a lot of thought going into how can we save money and put that towards the Splash Pad itself, instead of having to spend that money towards the demolition of the site and stuff like that. So, a lot of appreciation goes out to Dawn and Kyle for their hard work on helping the Splash Pad. I know those ladies are very grateful for everything you guys have done for them. And, you know, if we can get more of the city involved to try to help out, that's more money we can put towards the Splash Pad itself, which is going to jump on board with what Matt did with the skate park and all that stuff, just to try to make the city park a place that we want to go hang out. So, thank you.
So, the site's been selected, then?
More or less. We're still designing, but, you know, after our preliminary scoping meeting with the design team and the construction team, we really like the location of the existing pool, and it's for a couple of reasons. One, we don't take up the green space and have to deal with the irrigation there, but it's also close in proximity to a support structure, which is the old pool support structure. And we can put all the mechanical in there, have a short pipe run over to the Splash Pad. So, outside of it being officially selected, yeah, that's where we're looking.
I see. That's good. Thank you. Okay.
That's all I have, Your Honor.
Okay. City Administrators, report, please. Holly?
Holly.
Holly?
I just wanted to touch base with you guys and tell you that we have the Region Four meeting, April fourth, after the Wyman Business Council's going to be there, and they'll be providing a workshop on placemaking, or the planning and design and management of space, and then following that, we'll do a legislative recap.
Okay, and that's going to be here in Riverton?
Yep, April fourth.
April fourth in...
At one o'clock until seven thirty.
Dinner provided?
Um, I don't know yet. Probably.
Okay.
I don't know. Don't ask me questions. I don't know answers to yet.
I just need to know how big of a...
Email doesn't say it is or not, so I don't know.
If it's not provided, Holly will bring some.
Yeah. She'll drive in from Pennsylvania with fresh bread.
So, there's that. We'll put a pin in that, okay?
Okay.
[laughing]
Okay.
You need to be emotional, Holly?
So, well, we'll be glad to, we'll be glad to see you, Holly, when you get here. Okay?
All right, that works.
All right, thank you. All right. City Administrator?
Thank you, Your Honor. Well, I was going to start with the placemaking and the WHAM regional training, but we're going to move on. I have a couple good pieces of information tonight I'm happy to share with you. One, we got our insurance quote for this next year. I am pleased, I am amazingly pleased to tell you that we have no increase for next year's. Correct? Okay. She said something, it worried me.
Health insurance.
The health insurance. I apologize. It's our health insurance. I will tell you, this is the first time I've honestly ever really seen that happen the way, the way it has right now, and I would thank our clerk, Kristen Watson, for her work in making this happen and getting this processed. So, that is, that's a really good thing as we go into this next year's budget. So, the other item that, next item I would have is that WHAM resolutions are due by April thirteenth. If anybody has any item that they would like a resolution prepared for, or an item to discuss with council for approval, please see me, and we will put that, and we will put that together, and then put it to council as soon as we can for approval. That way, we can get it to WHAM if we want to consider that. Over this last legislative session, we've spent a fair amount of time working with the legislature, and this is a good way for us to get some items in on the front end. They probably require a little bit more discussion, but we would look forward to working through that with you. You will be receiving budget meeting calendar requests as that starts gearing up. That process is getting going, and we're looking forward to that, as much as you can look forward to developing an entire budget. And if you'll, if you'll indulge me for one second, I'm going to move to the podium. Just a second. Mostly for every, Mayor and Council, we've been through a Community Development Director recruitment process for the last few months. Over that time period, we've done a national search. We've accepted a multitude of candidates, reviewed those, narrowed that field even more, ultimately getting down to an interview group, an initial interview group. We did that interview, and then did a full staff, then a full senior staff interview with the finalists for that position. We had some great applicants, and we were very pleased with what we ended up with. However, today, I'm here to, I would like to introduce, not only to you, but to the rest of our community, our selection and recent, my recent selection for the position of Community Development Director, which is Mr. Eric Carr. Eric, you want to join me? I probably didn't make his current employer very happy when I stole him, but I'm perfectly happy to do so. Eric is an engineer by trade, which makes the fact that we changing the city engineer to Community Development Director, surprise, I don't know. I hope it's still quite useful. I'm going to prove that. However, Eric comes highly recommended with a great, with a great background, and we're truly looking forward to his work with us. Without, I don't want to take any more of your time, but I would introduce Eric, and...
Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have any questions of Eric, please?
I, Mayor, if I may?
Go ahead.
I have had the distinct pleasure of working with almost every one of you in one form or another at some point. I am truly excited about the opportunity that this affords, not only myself, but my wife and my family and the community. You're a great group of people, and I think we have an incredible opportunity to do some really neat things. So, with that, I would answer any questions you might have.
We're excited.
Yeah. Thank you very much.
Congratulations, Eric.
So, now, we'll have two Eric's on senior staff and two Carr's on planning. Isn't that interesting?
Your Honor, I'm big Eric, though, just so we're clear.
You're going to eat a lot.
Compensating.
Okay, all right. Anything else, Tony?
Only, only to denote that I believe Eric's first, first day will be the twenty-sixth, Monday, the twenty-sixth, and we look forward to having him. And I would also thank Dave Paskett for his work as the interim Community Development Director. He's done a great job, and we're truly appreciative of all the things he's done for us. So, thank you, Dave.
Thanks, Dave.
Thank you.
Heat back up to five-ten now.
We don't care how he feels about this, really.
Yeah, and I'm, and I'm assuming, I'm assuming, Eric, that there'll be very little stuff piled up on your desk that is going to take an immediate action.
When he took me back to the office, there was literally nothing on the desk.
Nothing on the desk, okay.
We were excited.
Okay, that's...
On Dave's desk, as I understand.
It's a week for them to move it, so.
Your Honor, I, I didn't open the closet.
Oh, yeah. Everything got kind of stowed away there, I see. Okay, well, I think we've got a number of issues that have sort of been hanging fire, and we'll be excited to see you work on them. Okay? All right, thank you. Mayor's comments. Okay, so, I've been serving as mayor for three and a half years, and it's been, it's been really enjoyable for me. I've had, I've had a good time. We've got a wonderful council. I'm just excited about that, and so, I've thought about it over the last, it seems like it's election time announcement opportunity, so I'll announce my intention to run again. I'll tell you that, I just, and I've said this many times before, but I just am in awe of the number of people in our community who every day do things that help our city without any, I think, direct benefit to them at all. I just want to be involved and participate and want Riverton to be a better place to live. I just, I just, it just really warms me to think of the number of people who have contributed so generously of their time and talent to make Riverton a really great place to live. Been a wonderful place for me to raise a family, and I just can't find, I just don't understand why people don't want to come here, flock here. Okay? But maybe if they did, it wouldn't be quite as nice a place. I don't know. Okay. All right, we don't have an executive session tonight. Okay, so, Chair would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. Second.
Moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? We're done at eight fifteen.